It's good to go through with me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, do you?
Thank you.[685.11][685.11](laughing)
(inaudible)
Oh, and I've been throwing the junk here.
Okay, we got this part.
Gotcha, gotcha, I guess we'll let me know.
Yeah.
Hello, can someone come in so I can fix the minutes real quick, please? Thank, okay, thank you, bye.
Oh, it's still on?
It's stuck here.
There are nothing appropriations, there are due, and there are transfers. Actually, I'm gonna take these back.
Could be trying to turn it off then turning it back on.
I don't know.[818.87][818.87](laughing) That would be too easy.
Yeah, I think she did her plug in.
Did she plug in? Alex, does it say configure or not? This says loading configured, right, Alex? You just gotta give it.
I noticed that. Kim Cairns out of Dallas, now? Is that where they bill it for, or?
Mm-hmm.
That's a cuss word around here.[840.11][840.11](laughing)
Well, they don't, uh, they've still got a place to eat at, don't they?
Yeah, I think they're building, I think they bill out of their Dallas.
So now, probably.
Yeah.
This is all. More to come.
(inaudible)
Hi, Alex.
Hi.
Better be right.
(inaudible)
We need a motion to approve the monthly appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Ron moved, has seconded to approve the monthly appropriations as presented, all in favor?
Bobbit.
I'm Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so motion carried unanimously without patient alcohol beverage tax.
I make the motion to approve, second.
Can you do we, if you give me the alcohol, we don't have it, we have the mortgage. Okay, so no, we don't have that one.
No motion, we rescind that. Okay, no motion, no action. How about a mortgage tax certification fee? We do have that one. All right, do I have a motion to approve the mortgage tax certification fee for August of 2018 in the amount of $45?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Ron moved, has seconded to approve the mortgage tax certification fee for August 2018 in the amount of $45. All in favor?
Bobbit.
I'm Ron.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we've already approved this one.
Oh.
Sorry, we don't need that.
Oh, maybe I have, I have another.
Okay, you have a.
Oh, no, I guess not.
No, that needs to go to the. Yeah, that needs to go to the excise board.
Sorry about that.
So, rescind that, Maxie, you okay with rescinding that?
I rescind that, yeah.
Because it's already been done.
Sorry about that.
So, it's been rescinded, been rescinded.
How about I move to review purchase orders and travel plans?
Let's see, do we have everything done for the excise board first? Anything else?
Well, we're.
I mean, that on our end?
Yes.
On our end, okay, good. All right, all right. You want to, so, Ron moves.
Has seconded.
Okay, has seconds to review the payments, purchase orders, and travel plans, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Ron.
Aye.
All right, so motion carried unanimously, shall review. Didn't we have a contract on that, Cindy? Um...
Not mine, well, I mean, I have some contract, but I thought I'd add it probably too.
Well, it says, it says, it's for maintenance, it says for maintenance contract, so.
Maintenance.
I don't know if it needs a, I don't know, I don't really know what that is.
Um, he's, Scott said something about it, I'm trying to remember. Let me just call him, because I don't know. Alex, my daughter's son.
Hello, it's Cindy, um, I'm in the board, the radio phone's not working right now, but in the air, um, they were, we were wondering about, on that motion, it's $1,935 as your invoice, but it says, uh, mobility premium maintenance, do we have a contract on that? Is that, it's a once a year fee? Okay, and what's it? What's it for, though? It's, um... Internet, it's, it has to do with... Oh, okay, okay. Okay, okay, all right, it's like a remote connection. Yeah. Okay, okay. It's a remote connection to the server. Okay, all right, that's what I needed, thank you. Oh, all right, mhm, bye-bye.
And you know I'll ask next year if I won't remember.
That's okay, he said it's just an annual fee that we pay, and it's for.
Remote server.
Yeah.
For the remote server, for the deputy, for the...
Well, I won't remember either, I'll probably have to ask him.[1597.11][1597.11](laughing) That's okay. So, we all see the month, or do we have a motion?
Just had all of those?
Yes.
We've got the transfers already done.
Mhm.
So, do we have a motion on the transfers?
So moved, the transfers, second.
All in favor, Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Motion carried. Monthly appropriations, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved, second.
Jones moves, Rob Vander, seconds to approve the monthly appropriations, all in favor, Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Where's the alcohol, I think you all just have to acknowledge that.
I'm gonna do that.
Yeah, yes. We'll make sure I'm, because I'm. So, do we have a motion to acknowledge the allocation of alcoholic beverage tax for July? Rob Vander moves, Jones seconds to acknowledge the alcoholic beverage tax for $8,249.21, all in favor? Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Motion carried. We don't, no action on the next item.
Over there.
Yeah. It's my, 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 mortgage tax fee for July. And that's one request, but there's five, like five copies.
Maybe, okay.
I'll take one more.
Oh, yes.
I guess.
Yep. Good being.
So, do we have a motion to approve the mortgage tax certification fee for July in the amount of $45?
So moved.
Rob Vander moved, Jones second to approve the mortgage tax certification fee for July, all in favor?
Uh, Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Motion carries. No action on the next item. So, estimate of needs and requests for appropriations from DCLA Independent School District 95 for fiscal year 1819. In the amount of $2.5 million. In the amount of two point five million. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Rob Vander moved, Jones second to, seconded to approve the estimate of needs and requests for appropriation fiscal year eighteen nineteen for DCLA, Independent School District Ninety-Five for two point five million. All in favor, Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander?
Aye.
Motion carried. No, no agenda items for the equalization board. Is there any new business? Once signed, then we can adjourn. So. You needing a bunch of them?
I just need six.
Oh, well, I have some out of my house, if you don't. From when we had the shop, the tire shop, I had all kinds of supplies from there. I don't know however many copies there are. Okay, yeah, that's what they say. Okay, so do we have a motion on, uh, excise and equalization board to adjourn?
So moved.
Jones moved, Rob Vander seconded to adjourn at nine thirty-two. All in favor, Jones?
Aye.
Rob Vander? Motion carried. We are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Yeah, I'll see you later. Thanks.
Copies, yeah, or that is Marcus copies.
Hello? Yes. Yes, sir, how you doing? Uh, yes, it's north of eleven. Okay. Ye- ye- Yes, yes. Okay. Well, we went in there and widened that all out. We put more, we put, we built the road up there because they was cutting the corner and running over the tin horns and everything. So, we went in there after we rocked that east west road, K road, and then we put a wider shoulder on the road so they could come around the corner. And we did that a month ago, three weeks ago. It's, it's rocked on the east west road and then it's not rocked going south, you know. Well, we've, we've raised it up and stuff and probably when you, when you come up there, we put a shoulder on the road on the right-hand side going south. We widened that road out so when you come from the east and you turn south, you know, we, we widened the shoulder on the right-hand side of the road so when they come around that corner, they have a little bit more that semis could cut and, and get out on the shoulder more to make the corner. This is what we did. Okay. Well, I, okay, I'll have to go out there and, and look at it again and, uh. Okay. Okay, I will, uh, I will get out there and, and take a look at it and get back with it for what we think we need to do, okay? You, you're welcome.
Yep.
Bye. I'll go away.
Give me to ask or do you want to check off?
Yeah, I, I do, yeah, I don't, I, I know seventy-two on there, but a lot of times, because we don't have any of our signatures on it and I don't recall us that on air conditioner problem.
Oh, okay.
Pat's got his machines are both down, so I don't think that's mine, but. I, yeah, I'll just, I'll just check the draw on.
Okay. I will be here again on Wednesday, so do you guys want to run POs and stuff for the.
If you don't want, if you don't want.
I went on an adventure. I went to my brother's. This is wife is in Seattle. So we go up to this fruit stand by Mulvaney. We just have all this stuff up, so we go to the next fruit stand. I didn't get the door closed, okay?
Hey, John, this is Cindy. Um, did we have our, uh, uh, air conditioner work on our cat grader?
And a peach.
Seven hundred and thirty. Okay, so seven hundred and thirty-one dollars, that sound right? Okay. Oh, okay, okay, oh, thanks so much.
And this car's coming and it straddles it goes through the beach, so we're going around. Hit, hit while retreating a peach and a pumpkin. We just laughed and laughed and laughed. The phone wasn't working in here, but I did activate it, we activated it.
Get three of those, probably.
Thank you.
Excuse me, four of those. Nice. It just seemed like we're using a lot of rock this time, first of all, it's done.
Yeah.
Then, they're set the same.
Set up.
They're set the same, so. But you won't bleed.
No, that's good.
Only could get some more off, now I'm not gonna do it himself. Till we've already started this bag.
Yeah.
I, I am nervous that, they're not getting done this year.
Yeah, I know.
We get a coach now, I'm just gonna. Part of the reason we had to go get some is there was some muddy clumps and some of that that we hadn't left it.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I know. The only thing I can think of is it was rainy weather like this when we went about it.
Yeah.
It might have been the bottom of the pile.
Yeah, that makes a lot more headaches when it's like that, man.
Sure do. I'm going to, I think next year when I do. Even E M, I think I will send some trucks down to.
Oh, I don't know. I texted Scott.
Yeah, my law. Because they're leasing.
Yeah, we have it on Thursday. Okay, yeah, Thursday, I thought we had some. We get to it. So, yeah, just tell them.
Well, it's, yeah, it's the same rock that I sent you.
Good on us, we get to it.
Yeah.
Even paying a term fine.
Max on this sole snapping deal.
Yeah.
That doesn't have to be bad because it's a professional service they call.
Well, I was wanting to put that.
Oh, sorry, you put that on.
Here, I have a sole contractor here.
Okay, okay.
So, it's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, it's professional service, but yeah, they should have, they should have probably interviewed the three.
Well, that's what I was thinking, you know, just like anything else.
Yeah, they inter, she should have interviewed three possible people or whatever and then she should have give us her recommendation and we say, okay.
Yeah, that's what I.
You might talk in.
Just like anything else.
It's a professional service, you have to interview them.
Okay.
So you might find out.
Okay. Okay.
I tore that, did you? Looks like it's one she's using for parts.
I have some of those around the house too, so I better not throw those away because I might need that.
Yeah.
And then after a while I'll probably just chomper, it seems like, you know. I even bought one that has the handle that you can just do like this and their little mi, their, their little glasses and they're only about this big and they have a little handle.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
I have some that even have lights built into them right here.
Yeah.
That's kind of, we're probably, we buy silly ones just as a joke.
That's kind of handy.
Yeah.
Need a kernel, please, set of glasses.
Yeah.
A moniker.
Is that what it's called?
Monikers, I gotta do that.
We learned something today, Pat.
There you go.
So they're saying that our project is ninety point three, three percent complete here at the courthouse.
On from the.
And left.
Yeah.
They might want to ask us, um, Falconburg sign, is that what that says?
Okay, good, okay. Max, she's on that second page.
I'll bring it in.
Okay, Alex, we need a motion to approve payments of purchase orders and travel claims as presented on our favor.
Aye, the POs are ready. Thank you.
His move, Ron seconded to approve the payment, purchase orders and travel claims as presented on our favor.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes. All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
I move to approve flight purchase orders.
I'll think of that.
Mark moved has seconded to approve flight purchase orders on our favor.
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. I need to find out on that one because there's no way they're ninety percent done with the project. That kind of confuses me.
Yeah, I need to check on that.
Yeah, that confused me.
There's no way they're ninety percent done.
I just don't know if that's a.
Or is it payment?
I don't know.
I'll find out and let you guys know.
I don't know, that kind of.
Yeah, I said that and then I'm like, I think I'm a scope because that doesn't make sense.
That item G, you seen that, right? I was curious.
That might be it.
Okay, thank you. Seventeen, what was it, twenty-one, seventy-two?
Seventy-seven, six, 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 point seven eight.
Oh, that's. When we get done, I think I under, maybe I'm.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, have you signed all of our shell contract? We did that air of January, we did that in July, I can't remember.
We did it in July, but I would rather do it in January but.
Well, I think it's because.
We got a fiscal year.
Yeah, have we?
I need to go through and look through and see, I'm gonna have to check.
Yeah, I can't remember if we've done those.
I think you sent them off to get them signed first.
Are we talking about which ones?
The Maybells, the Clover.
Oh, the shell contract, oh, yeah, we should be good on those, but I'll double check them, yeah.
Yeah, I know you sent them off to get the other party to sign first. I just can't remember if we sent.
I can't, I think, I can't remember either.
I'm thinking those were in January, in January.
No, they're in July.
Oh, they are in July.
They should be, they're, they're fiscal year.
Oh, gotcha, okay, okay.
Unless something, yeah, like if something unusual comes up, you know.
Yeah.
On them. Like one of mine, I had to change because I was splitting it and then the, it went all to her so we had to get that straightened out mid-year, but.
I'll be with you soon to be down here because I've got them all these things.
What time's that paper meeting on Thursday?
It's nine o'clock, I think it's.
Shoot, it's pressing.
Yes, thank you.
If that was me, I'd be on about sneeze number six. And then do subating whether to go to the sneeze number seven or not. I kind of have like a sneezing cough and then I was like, sneezing or coughing, I'm like, I don't know, a little of both, I think.
Okay, next item is. Financial statement on resale property fund for treasurer's office as of June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen. And at that time, ending balance was seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents.
We just need a motion to acknowledge.
Just acknowledge.
I make that motion.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we need to approve it.
I can get one signed plus here.
So.
I make a motion to sign, uh, June thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Say.
His move, Ron seconded to sign the financial statement for resale property fund for treasurer's office subject to audit, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes. All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
What is today, the fourth?
Fourth, September fourth.
It's hard to believe it's September already.
Yep.
We have a financial statement, uh, June thirtieth, twenty eighteen for the resale property fund for the treasurer's office in the balance of eighty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seven cents. Do we have a motion to, to sign that?
So moved.
Second.
Ron moved has seconded to sign the financial statement for resale property in the amount of eighty thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and seven cents, subject to audit, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Um, contract with Solus mapping FY eighteen nineteen for the treasurer's office.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve. Say.
Well, what, what is this exactly for? She's doing something.
With Solus mapping.
Sign it. Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
Okay, so G I, so this is in addition to her, um, revale. So is this coming out of her, this has to come out of her revale, right? Is that, no, I guess there's a, I didn't want.
I can throw that out.
That's all right. All right, so who moved?
Max.
S moved, Ron seconded to approve the contract with Solus mapping FY eighteen nineteen for the treasurer's office in the amount of six thousand, seven hundred dollars for work to be performed August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. All of that will need to change on that scope because it'll, it didn't go through the twenty-third, we need to change those dates. So these will need to read September, um, fourth, we need to change that, initial that. All in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye, wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
We will just sign it.
I'm sorry. I got to run it.
Yeah, that's okay.
We have a, to revoke the requisition officer, Whitley Vanaman from the treasurer's office.
So moved.
Second.
Ron moved has seconded to revoke the requesting, uh, requisition officer, Whitney, Whitley Vanaman from the treasurer's office, all in favor?
Bobbit.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. And we have a designation of a requisitioning officer, Lori Ann Hay.
Hall, is it Hall?
Hall.
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 Ah, 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 okay. Just one Hall.
I shall, say.
His move, Ron seconded to approve Lori Ann. Hess moved, wrong seconded, to approve Loriann Hall as, as, to design.
Requisition.
As a requisition. Well, my math doesn't work good today. All in favor?
All right.
Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Let's see, this is to revoke, okay, the next one is to revoke the requisition officer Brock. And that's H, it should be H O H.
H.
Yeah, it should be Homan, H O H M A N. Yeah, I think it's two ends, from the Deer Creek Fire Department.
Yes, okay.
Do we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Second.
Brock moved, has seconded to revoke the requisitioning officer Brock Homan from the Deer Creek Fire Department, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously.
That's it, that's how it was on the whole. But you're right, it is, I didn't even think about it when I.
I didn't, I didn't, well, I, I looked at the agenda, but I didn't act it either.
Yeah. By that end, by that point in the week, I was kind of like, ah.
To designate the requisition officer Ray Webster for the Deer Creek Fire Department, do we have a motion to do that?
I do, I make a motion.
Say.
Hess moved, wrong seconds, to approve Ray Webster as a, uh, requisitioning officer for the Deer Creek Fire Department, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. What is the next item?
Something Desi gave me, she said it has to go through, it's just so that, um, let's see, she, it says SAM.gov registration.
What is SAM.gov?
Um, that's like something to do with the census, is it?
No.
Thank you.
I'll go get it.
It's for federal wars.
Does it have to do with the FEMA grants or anything like that?
I don't know, it says federal grants, let's see, to be eligible.
What was the SAM?
Well, SAM.gov.
Oh, that's like when you got your disaster payments for a FEMA.
So it's a FEMA deal.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you have to be signed up for that in order to receive the payments.
Well, we sure won't that.
We're not paying it, so.
Yeah, yeah, so right now, see, it was District Three, that Cecil.
Was doing it.
Was doing it.
Okay, I got you.
And so, the last couple of years, I filled it out, but now they're requesting.
Okay.
Notarized, and that's.
Okay.
That letter.
Okay, so we need to just.
Is that it then?
Yes. On here, oh, thank you very much.
I move to designate Desi Scott as the entity administrator for all districts for SAM.gov.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Rock moved, has seconded to designate Desi Scott as the entity administrator for the SAM.gov registration, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Do you want to add this back?
Yes. So that is the second one we do, we've gotten both back, and we've gotten payment on both. I returned the others copy back and not signed by the law.
Gotcha, so do we have a motion to approve the ag lease?
I make a motion to approve the ag lease, uh, number two, between Grant County and Dennis Schultz, uh, Schultz, Schultz Brothers.
Second.
Uh, excuse me, Hess moved, wrong seconded, to approve the ag lease two between Grant County and Dennis Schultz, Schultz Brothers, in the southeast quarter, twenty-three, twenty-six, five, for three years at forty-five hundred dollars per year, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Four, six, six.
Yeah, six, six.
Did I not say that?
Yeah, you said five.
Oh, twenty-six, six, six, twenty-six, six.
Well, it's twenty-seven, too.
But see, we only have two, who messes with the third one back?
Well, and the reason, I, I did three, and that was so that like if I needed to.
Have an extra.
Yeah, so I'm just keeping a copy and.
Got you, all right. All right, so, the comdata fleet fuel card.
I didn't really do anything on that Max, were you working on that?
Yes, and, and we wasn't gonna put that back on there till we got something, and I, I've got a letter partly wrote to requesting data, uh.
Of data.
Comdata stuff, but I haven't, I haven't done it.
I mean, the contracted stuff's out on the state website nearly done, so we need to get.
Yeah, it's on the state website.
We had to develop a plan, remember Steven wanted us to develop.
I thought Steven was gonna do that, though.
Well, he was, and he got busy and things didn't happen.
Well, that's what we need, see, we gotta, we used our P card to charge fuel, and we gotta use the comdata card instead, and so we just need to, so.
Where at?
Um, uh, in Missouri, out of state, yeah, was when, when I had to go to court on that Roth give deal, I sent, uh, Paul Matthews up there, and we topped it off, but he didn't have enough fuel to get home, it was one of those windy days, so he had to get, you have to get fuel or what do you do?
Well, and that, that basically, the comdata, we started that, which will all qualify.
Right.
But started it for the fire department.
Yeah, 'cause that's, yeah, it's, it's an easy, uh, I talked to Steven, in fact, 'cause I talked to Steven about that, and it's all documented, on that deal, and he said, yeah, just write that up that we've applied for it or we're getting it, so, I guess.
I, I mean.
Yeah, we're sending, you want her to go ahead and follow through with that, or, uh?
It don't matter, whichever you wanna do.
To see where we're at on, on getting those?
And he was gonna develop like a.
We needed a basic outline of who was responsible.
How we're gonna track it.
Are you gonna track it by a vehicle or a person?
How does the, see, sheriff already has those, they're fleet cards.
They're fleet cards, but they're different than the comdata.
I know, but why can't we?
They gotta have a procedure for that.
They gotta have a procedure, why can't we get, let's ask the sheriff for his, his policy on that.
But it's just like the, uh, the task force.
Yeah, I know, it's gonna be a little bit different, but each one of those, see, like when we get their bills, you know, each one is, you can tell whatever card, so it's like.
I think, basically, we can just list out, like, if we're gonna have it for each district, that we are responsible for, the supervisor is responsible for.
But I think it's what he's wanting is something, a law that says like, you're my, this isn't something we're gonna use every day, like the sheriff does. Like, right now, you go use our card, and you have to put in your vehicle number, you have to put in your, your hours or your mileage on your vehicle, you know, and then we keep a spreadsheet so that we know that this, we use ten gallons between these miles or these hours, and we use twenty gallons, you know, and that way, then we can run a, and Paul does it, I have Paul send you that, and it shows you what the consumption is, like, if you're getting ten miles to the gallon, all of a sudden, you get two miles, you're gonna say it was, what was the deal?
This deal here that, that we had wasn't for tracking your miles or whatever, because in a fire truck.
You can't.
You can't.
Yeah.
But it's just who is responsible for the ticket, and who is gonna be responsible for the card, that's the main thing.
Well, I may, the sheriff's got a policy on that.
If not, I can call some other counties that are using comdata and see if they, or did you have it?
I already have.
You did, okay.
But, and I don't have my other envelope with me, I've got some pages and stuff.
I will tell you, if you call Cleveland County Sheriff, they just updated, I believe, all of their policies. And they might have something that we could use, you might have to call their HR, I'm not sure where their policies are, you might have to call their, they're a big county. You might have to call the HR department and see if we can get a copy of what they've done.
Okay.
Okay.
August, how about Max and I'll work together on that, is that good with you?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, so, work in progress. Uh, okay, this is our letter of agreement for High Performance Leadership Academy. Now, now, Adrian ought to be under Dean.
Okay, so that needs.
Yeah, I would suggest you change that, 'cause she should be her supervisor.
They just had it in that way, so I guess I can go in and change.
Oh, well, yeah, um, I don't know if they mean, I guess leave it like that, but, uh, if you're, yeah, if you're wanting someone, you know, that's gonna be, like, you're, like, they're gonna do, do so much work, and then they're gonna contact, you don't want them to contact you as your supervisor.
Because, well, that, they put that in from when I first had to go in and sign in, and it just said who's the primary contact, so, but I can request it on hers.
Yeah.
This isn't necessarily breaking it out by their names.
Okay, just, okay, I guess when we get to that, we can change it in, um, maybe once they get enrolled, maybe they ask them who their supervisor is.
This is just kinda like the starting process, this is the first, I got the, an email on, these were emailed to me after I did that.
Okay, all right, great, okay, so, we need a motion to approve the NACO letter of agreement for that academy.
So moved.
Second.
Brock moved, has seconded to sign the NACO letter of agreement for the High Performance Academy for Alex Britton and for Adrian Henry, all in favor?
All right.
Aye. Wrong.
Aye.
Hess.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried unanimously. Do we have any request and permits? And, um, the sheriff was contacted, and he's sick today, so we're going to reschedule our walkthrough of the, the facilities for next Monday. Reschedule.
Okay, do we all need to print her names in?
She, I let her do all that other stuff.
Yeah, I do that.
Yeah, she always fills in all the.
Yeah, I fill in all the blanks.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So, Cindy, Cindy, you have any new business?
The only thing, and I, but I can put it on Thursdays if I need to, I did send the CFA report in, but I forgot to put it on the agenda to have you all sign off on it, so if you wanna.
Yes, put that on there.
I'll put it on, on Wednesdays if that's okay, and I went ahead and, uh, I sent a cover letter, and just FYI, we, those are sent to the Weatherford office.
To Weatherford.
Yeah, I contacted Cheryl, and that's what she, so.
You can probably put POs on there, too, I'm surprised we didn't have one today.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can catch up on those.
Yeah.
Um, okay, that would be good. Max, you have any new business?
Well, I don't have any new business, but on the agenda last week, we had something that CD sent over, and we were going to put it on this agenda, and I don't see it on.
And I forgot, but I'll put it on Wednesday, I got it, I've got, it's a resolution or something?
Yeah, Donnie was gonna come by and pick that up.
Oh, I'm, well, I mean, I've got it over there, can it be new business?
No, 'cause we knew that before.
Oh, okay, that's my bad, I mean, I'll take it to him if I need to on Wednesday.
Well, he was just going to the city to meet with them, and he was just gonna drop it off, so.
What is the resolution, Max?
It's, uh, just resolution, signing back up for us, uh, on our projects.
Oh.
And stuff, uh, to get stuff going. There's one, there's two of them, there's one for Pat, for a bridge, I think, and one for me for my STP project over there, but we'll just go ahead and do it Wednesday.
I'm going to, um, I'm going to the city on Thursday to the ODOT building, I've got a meeting at ODOT, I could, if that works, I could take that.
I'll talk to Donnie and see, and if you can take it down there then, that would be great.
Yeah, 'cause I've got.
I'll talk to Donnie.
I'll be, yeah, I've got that, so.
Okay, and I promise, I'll go put it on the agenda right now.
Okay.
Last week, I was so budget oriented, and then it kinda snuck up on me the week, the, oh, I can get the agenda out, so I apologize.
Yeah, okay, our meeting is on Thursday at nine, and, and, yeah, then I'm gonna be in the city by one for my, my ODOT meeting, so I can.
Oh, we have our meeting Thursday?
That's, yeah, I've got, today's Tuesday.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Today's Tuesday, yeah, today's Tuesday, so it's Thursday, so it's not tomorrow, it's Thursday.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
But I'll type the agenda up and send it out to y'all, so that make sure if there's any other one, you need it on there, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, I have no.
I don't have any.
I have no new business. Um, Commissioner's comments, Max, what do you have today?
You know, we got, uh, three and a half inches of rain, uh, anywhere from a half inch to three and a half, depending on where you're at, so we're gonna have some road issues, I'm already aware of two that we've got. We are, uh, we're just continuing to mow and grade and haul some rock, and, uh, we finished up shaling the road last week and laid the shale out, and I don't know what this rain will have done to yet, but that might be a fun, fun trip down that road, it usually is until it gets packed down, but, uh, I don't have anything else, uh, Joe is coming up to take soil samples on another road or two, he's got a chemical that says that it'll control dust, and we're going to do some experiment and put some of that out, but it's basically to stabilize the base, and you can chip seal over the top of it, or make the road hard, and, and it sounds too good to be true, I hope it is true, we're gonna find out, I wanna try it, so.
How are you gonna incorp, how are they gonna incorporate it, Max?
They're going to, uh, mix it, you can spray, grade, shape the road up and everything, and then you've got a grinder that you bring in, you spray it.
Are you doing the grinding, or with your D, your dealer?
He's gonna do it.
He's gonna do it, okay.
Yeah.
When is he gonna do that?
He was supposed to come up today to take samples again, and the first samples that we took, uh, three, two-thirds of them turned out okay, and the others needed more, so he's coming up to take the more samples, but that changes the elasticity of your soil, and two-thirds of them were A-OK, they had, it was up high enough, there was no question. Uh, one of the other roads is questionable.
How many miles you doing?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna try it on a small amount first, but this product is only like, uh, total cost is under five thousand a mile.
Yeah, that's what, he, he came to here and talked, when you get ready to do that, I wouldn't mind coming over and watching, or sending Robert over or something, I'd like to see that, how to do that.
Okay, Wilson Lyles just did a bunch, you know Wilson?
Yes.
And he told me to call Wilson and talk to him, and, and, uh, oh, gosh, uh, what's the other commissioner, I can see his name, uh, out in western Oklahoma, uh, God, I can see his, I can see him, I just can't get his name right now. He just did a bunch, seventeen miles of it, and they showed the video of it, and it, they laid it out, and then they sealed and chipped over it, it looks good. And he says it's got sixty to eighty trucks a day.
Wow. Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that. You don't have to chip and seal, do you, I mean?
No, we don't have to.
'Cause I mean, that's, you know, that's pretty expensive in itself, but it would certainly help on some of those other roads.
District one, years ago, I'm talking twenty, twenty-five, thirty years ago, put a product out there that you'd never have to blade or anything, they put it on the road, and I can tell you for a fact, right after the rain for two hours, the roads were some greasy, you could not stay on it.
That was the idea, keep everybody off. Won't have to grade, won't get fed up, just can't get on it.
I literally was following a vehicle that stopped in the road and slid sideways off the.
You thought it was ice, yeah.
Yes.
Some of that gray shale, when you first lay that gray shale, it can get pretty slimy, and basically get something, get it worn.
I will sure let you know, I'm very interested to see if it works, and if it does, it's something, uh, that I'm gonna try to incorporate in, and, you know, we all have people that, that dust by their place and stuff. We know it's country, it's gonna be dusty, it's gonna be wet, it's gonna be slick.
But if it's five thousand a mile, and they do all the work, and even if that saves you one year, you've saved your money in the labor and the wear and tear on your equipment for one year on that. I mean, you can run the numbers on that pretty easy.
Okay.
This year, I mean, think of it, every time it rains, we're going back over the same roads, I mean, we, we're basically, because you're trying to get your school bus routes first, and your major collectors, and the other ones have grass this tall on them, because we can't ever get to them because of the rain, not that I don't like rain.
Well, I'll let you know when they.
Yeah, let me know on that.
That's all I have.
What do you have?
We finished up chip sealing nine-twenty, uh, between town of Palm Creek and the Garfield County line on Friday afternoon, uh, so we're done with that area, um, the plan is to move over to Trenton Road, and it's certainly not gonna be this week, we're gonna chance rain every day. Um, we're, the new distributor truck is running well, the chipper. We're, the new distributor truck is running well, the chipper is, it's, we got some issues right now that hopefully, we got some parts on the way, so hopefully they get in, and that takes care of things, uh, before we use it again. I had, both my CAT graders went down with major engine issues Tuesday of last week. So they are both in the shop, and will be for probably a month or better. And my CAT representative is supposed to be trying to get me a couple of plumbers in the meantime. One's within five hundred hours of being out of warranty, and the other one is within two hundred hours, so, thank goodness for that.
Well, they know when to shut their warranty off, don't they?
I think you can buy whatever warranty you want, can't you?
Yeah, you're still in warranty, good, good.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and, and those, those notes actually come up in April, that, I bet that was one of the last few purchases that Schaefer made before he retired. 'Cause it was April of fourteen, I believe this went, so, um, hopefully they limp through till that's over with. But anyway, so, uh, you're just gonna have to be patient, we're, we only got three right now. That's all I've got.
Well, we've got rain, too, and, uh, mowing is, seems to get further and further behind. I had one, uh, employee that has changed jobs, that, so he, so he, he ended up August thirty-first, so I hired a new employee, started today. The guy's using for part-time, since he, he was just part-time, so he was interested, so I rolled him over into that grader position, so. He's in the shop today with everybody else, but I think he's coming up, Cindy, to, to do.
Yeah, I need Paul.
And we're doing a bunch of online training right now, all down, you can get your blood, uh, born pathogens, that have to be done every year, so you can get that online with ACO's training, so that might be something you guys wanna do in your shops, get them online, get their annual blood born pathogen done. We have basically finished nine sixty on our crack ceiling, I think we have two hours left, but the rain it is, they, they packed it up and went someplace else. So they'll catch us on the backside, coming back, just a couple hours left, so the road should not be closed, uh, now, it should be open at all times. I know we've had that issue while they were working on it with the road being closed, but, so we were, got that road back up and running, and, uh, next year, we'll, we'll probably do a leveling overlay on it, so to, to save it. This week, um, tomorrow is the Women in Transportation meeting in Oklahoma City, and then Thursday, we have our board meeting, obviously, and um, I'll have my ODOT Working Group driving Oklahoma. And then Friday, I have a couple of conference calls, one with my NACO Executive Committee, and one with the Women in Government, so it is a busy week, so. I am trying to, I finally got all the budget stuff last week, at the end of the week, so I'm going to call Buddy and see about trying to meet with him tomorrow, and take the budget stuff down to him to see where we are, we're gonna, this will just be part one, to see how negative we are, and where we're gonna have, where we're gonna be on it before we start looking at. I just take it, and I know some of them were changed, they're different than what they turned in, some of them have lowered their wages, and done some different things on them, so we'll see where we are, and we'll look at them, give them to Buddy to put them in and give us a dry run to look at.
Okay.
And I don't know where he is on that, did he ever get up with you, Cindy, and get you balanced and squared away?
Well, I mean, I sent him what, I sent him the account summary and stuff, I'll give him a call.
See, if he needs, if he needs to come up and do anything with you and that, so, and then we'll get the budget back, and we'll get it, once we get that down to him, so, with that, um.
I make a motion to, say.
Hess moved, wrong, uh, seconded.
Ten thirty-five.
Yeah, ten thirty-five, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Wrong.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
All eyes.
Yes. Or, or, oh, yes.